Call to order, the November 19, 2024, meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Madam Clerk, if you kindly call the roll.
Yep. Jean Marseille Jr., Patrick Mayfield.
Present.
Present.
Will Corrente.
Present.
Stephen Myers.
Present.
Peter Piffco.
Present.
Deborah Rain.
Present.
Sam Fish.
Present.
Next order of business is approval of the October 16, 2024 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? Are there any changes or corrections? And if not, I'm looking for a motion for approval.
I'll move it.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is the report of the planning staff. Ms. Van.
Good evening, board members. Angela Van, Planning and Zoning Administrator. Give you a quick update on the cases that's already were approved since your last planning board meeting. First case was resolution number 22324. It's for a dock at 184 Arlington Road. The request was to scrub the dock outside of the middle one-third. So the waiver request was for a setback of 10 feet from the west property line where the code would require 25 feet. You heard this case at your September 17 meeting, and you voted 6 to 0, and the commission approved this at their October 28 meeting. Second case is a major amendment to the Banyan Cay design guidelines. It's on Banyan Cay here off of Congress Avenue. There was a modification to allow for different type of screening on top of the level of the hotel's parking garage facility, and also modifications to allow for content, different content on the permanent identification signs located at the main entrance along Congress Avenue. Again, you heard this also at your September 17 meeting, and commission approved this at their October 28 meeting also. And that concludes the cases that were approved since the last planning board meeting.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Thank you so much. Next on the agenda are remarks by the chairperson, of which I have none. That brings us to the declaration of ex parte communications. Let me begin by saying with respect to planning board case 17909D, I had a Zoom meeting with the applicant's representative. As for planning board case 1998, I received a supporting email from the applicant's representative, which I've submitted to the clerk to be made part of the record. These communications will not prevent me from deciding these cases solely upon the evidence presented this evening. As to everything else, I have had no other ex parte communications. I have received no other written communications. I have conducted no investigations. I have made no site visits. I receive no expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and written communications be made a part of the record. Does anyone else have anything to disclose? And let me start with you first, Sam.
As to all matters on the planning board agenda this evening, I have had no ex parte communications. I have not have any, or I have not received any written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Deborah.
I did receive emails from, a couple of emails regarding planning board case 198. However, my decision will be based on the information presented here this evening. As it relates to the planning board agenda, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I requested these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Let me skip. This is good. Yeah. Please.
Where is it? Okay. As to the matter 1998, I've had no ex parte communications. I did receive an email similar to the one that you referenced, Steve, which I'll forward to the clerk. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. As to matter 1799D, I did have a Zoom call with, what's his name?
The applicant's representative.
Thank you. Had a Zoom call with the applicant's representative, Jeff. Jeff, right? Jeff Darnell? Is it Darnell? Not Darnell. Anyway, I've known him for years. I can't remember his name right now, but I have not received any written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Can you affirm that you'll base your decisions solely?
And I will affirm that I will base my decision solely upon the evidence presented tonight.
Thank you so much. You ready, Peter?
I did a Zoom meeting regarding planning board case number 1799D, but my decisions will be based on the information presented at the meeting today. I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation, and I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you, Patrick.
With respect to planning board case 17909D, I did take part in a meeting with the applicant's representatives. With respect to planning board case 1998, I did receive an email, which I will submit to the record. I did not have time to respond to it. With respect to those ex parte items, my decisions will be based solely on the testimony presented here on both cases here this evening. With respect to all other matters, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you so much. Jean.
As to all matters on the agenda, I have not had ex parte communication. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you so much. Okay, that brings us then to the swearing in of speakers. Would everyone who plans to speak or offer testimony this evening please stand up and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful? You may be seated. Next on our agenda are continued cases, of which there are none. That brings us then to planning board case number 1990, and may we hear from the applicant.
Hi, I'm Donna. We're Doc's More Construction. Thank you for listening to me. The purpose of this Class A action is to extend a dock beyond the 100 feet that the city allows. Okay? This is a diagram of the existing dock. Right now, it's at 67 feet into the water. And we're looking to, if you look at the dock to the south, and, well, this doesn't show the one to the north, but I'll show in a minute, they're well beyond the 67 feet. They're well beyond 100 feet. This one, this diagram shows that the dock, and what we're talking about doing is adding another 50 feet. It shows it in this diagram, plus a boat lift at the end. And that will give us about 117 feet total. And this is just a diagram of the layout, showing the 5 foot, 550-foot extension with the boat lift at the end, so they have enough depth to moor their boat. And this diagram just shows that there's our existing docks in that area that are equally, if not further out than what we're proposing to do. That's it.
All right, thank you. Any questions of the applicant?
Would the boat be available to rent, or?
If you want to, it's going to be a nice 45-foot boat.
All right, thank you. Let me hear from staff.
All right, thank you.
I promise I only don't just present docks. Alex Sanglier, Planner for the Record. As the applicant stated, this is for a dock length greater than 1,000 square feet. The applicant's justification statement stated that this is for safe water depths for the dock to properly moor, the rough tidal conditions, so it's safe for them to enter and exit. In addition, the marine life of possibly like trying to maintain the marine life that's existing, that wouldn't involve any dreading and more brutal damage to the environment. The applicant did provide both the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and the Department of Army Corps of Engineers approving the addition of the dock length. These are the, them provided. This is just a diagram of the proposed dock length. The waiver is for additional 31 feet. As the applicant stated, there is an existing dock that is located further down. So the applicant's house is this white house right here, and the pros dock, or the existing dock that does exceed that 100 feet is located right here. And it was approved by City Commission. That's the resolution number. Staff finds that this application does comply to all the standards and regulations, and staff is recommending approval for this Class A dock application. Any questions from me?
Any questions of staff? All right, thank you so much. Would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this application? And if not, we'll bring it back to the board. Does anyone have any issues or concern about this application? And if not, I'm looking for a motion for approval.
I'll move. I move that the planning board recommend to the City Commission approval of planning board case PB 1990, a request by Doc's and More Construction Company on behalf of Joe Marks for a Class A special use permit with waivers for a private dock that exceeds the length of 100 feet maximum of the subject lot located at 8002 Flagler Court. The motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing, along with the application submitted and the staff report, which constitute competent and substantial evidence. The planning board hereby makes findings of fact that the application complies with the required standards in Section 94-36E 3 through 5, Section 94 313A 3, and Section 94-273A 2 of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Regulation, CLDRS. In addition, this recommendation is made subject to conditions of approval contained in the staff report dated November 8, 2024. I move that these conditions are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations and consistency with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach.
All right, we have a motion. Have we a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to planning board case number 1813H. May we hear from the applicant?
I think I can get it. Okay. Right point's light. Oh, right there. Okay. No, 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 no. Nope. Okay, go ahead. Thank you. Good evening, board members, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair. For the record, my name is George Gentile. I am the Senior Principal of 2GHO Inc. We're landscape architects and planners. And tonight, we're representing JCBB Military Trail and 45th Street, 45th LLC, who is the owner of the property that you see on front of you. This is the Prime Corner property that was approved in 2019. And the yellow area, I want to make sure that you'll see in further items, that that is the approved site plan for the Wawa that is going in. It's under construction, so it's not a part of tonight, but it's a part of the overall CPD for the project. And to go over, I'll put this right here in one minute. Our request is to modify, make a modification of the existing site plan to accommodate the changes needed for the construction of a 2,415-square-foot Chipotle restaurant and construction of a 5,399-square-foot Chick-fil-A restaurant with drive-through and vehicular parking on the property. Second, we are requesting modifications to the existing site plan to accommodate these changes. On an existing interior roadway spine road, we've actually moved it into the property farther. This is to accommodate the development, which is now before you tonight. And then further, we're asking to make changes to the property's western driveway, which you'll see in a few minutes. And last, we are amending the approved design guidelines for Prime Corner CPD to accommodate not only items for this project, but to add some additional language in there for more pedestrian amenities and items on the overall master plan, based on the changes in the site plan. So this is the property location. It's 9.84 acres. This was originally, and I'm going to show you the history in a minute, it was originally in the county we annexed it in. The area to the north, well, I'm going to show you the south, when Commercial Plaza's on the south side of 45th Street. This is a Palm Beach County residential property right now. However, it is a land-use commercial high with MR5 multifamily residential as a second item. The site to our immediate north property line, as you see there, is in the city Riviera Beach. Riviera Beach comes to that point. That is a Bobcat tractor sales and maintenance facility. It is zoned industrial in Riviera Beach. And then the site to the north of that, which I don't have a line on, is an RV part, an RV sales facility. So those are all Winnebagoes and trailers, and that's what's happening on that side of 45th Street. Historically, this, the site was annexed, the Comp Plan Amendment was done, and rezoning on May 20, 2019. In December, the remainder of the property was brought in and approved, as referenced below, which I'm going to state. Conference Plan Amendment went from industrial to commercial on 5.02 acres. Then we rezoned from industrial to general commercial for the existing cell tower site. There is a cell tower site that's been on this site, I think, longer than I've been born, and I'm pretty old. But it, it has a very, very long time lease on this property and cannot be taken off, and probably communications in there would be severely damaged by everybody. So we rezoned it from an industrial plan development and to industrial I, and then further rezoned the I to general commercial. Pretty complicated, but today, it's general commercial in the city of West Palm Beach. And then we did a CPD, Commercial Plan Development and Site Plan Design in February of '21, all during the pandemic. So this is what shows you the zoning of the site right now, and you can see the city limits and the industrial categories. The remainder of the property to the, to the west is in Palm Beach County and has an MR5 and commercial high designation. This is our existing master plan that was approved in 2020. You can see the Wawa there, which again, is not a part of tonight's review. It was a master plan that showed intensities and potential commercial, general commercial designations for the master plan, total of about 50,800 square feet. And it's very important to know that this site has an FAR of 1.0, so that's nine acres times 43, 560, times nine acres, and you get the square footage, which never could be built on the site, but it still has that potential. The site plan you're going to see tonight is at .1 acre, .1 FAR, which is a very low, we're getting less square footage on the property by the market, and this is what happens, and you'll see that in a minute, so. So this is our PUD amended master plan. I'm going to zoom in on it, but you can see that along 45th Street, which is on the bottom, the Chick-fil-A is located right on 45th Street. We did move this driveway slightly, and we moved the internal access drive to the north to accommodate the parking required and the drivelanes and everything for the Chick-fil-A. And then this is the Chipotle, which is adjacent to the cell tower, which this is the cell tower site. And the Chipotle works off the internal driveway as well, same as Wawa. So we only have three access points to the site. They include one on Military Trail and two on 45th Street. Zooming in, this is the proposed amended site plan for the Chick-fil-A, which you see right here. The circulation enters in here. They have the drive-throughs. They have two lanes of drive-throughs, and the pickup area is right here on this side. And then the rest of it is parked. In a minute, I'm going to show you the pedestrian circulation in there, but the pedestrian circulation will be connected through the entire site. Let me move to the next one. I'm not going to go over the Wawa. This is a little bit closer look, so you can see how the parking and the plaza areas with the Chick-fil-A work. This is an outdoor dining area, which is internal to the site. This is the pickup window. Traffic will then come out here and go either to the west or go out to Military Trail, whichever is necessary for the people to leave. It's heavily landscaped, buffered along 45th Street. And if I hit this button, all of the red dashed lines that you see in there are the pedestrian connections throughout the entire site, and they continue on and will continue on as development happens to the west. There's one parcel here left and one parcel, smaller parcel now, slightly to the north of this parking area, which will mainly be used for employees to use that area. And second off is that this is our handicap connection to 45th Street. We felt that that was the most appropriate area to be safe. They could be controlled at the exit point, and goes down the center drive down to 45th Street. This is the Chipotle plan. Again, you come in on the entry drive, and you circulate either the drive-through or into the parking area. It's a 2,415-square-foot facility. It does have outdoor dining and some pedestrian amenities that are in the front towards Military Trail that you see here with landscaping. And this is the pedestrian circulation on this project that goes out to Military Trail, and this is our handicap walkway that will go out to that. The rest of it is all accessible inside the project itself. On the design guidelines, when we did the CPD, we had to do a set of design guidelines for the entire project, even before we had the uses particularly set up, and they included permitted uses, allowed building setbacks, heights, property development regulations, access roadways, parking, landscaping, lighting, architectural design, and signage. Basically, the first one we're asking to amend is the building setback and heights. This originally required a maximum setback, which is, we couldn't be any farther back than 15 feet from 45th and 15 from Military. And to accommodate and make it safe on the site, we've asked to change the maximum setback requirements be removed, and this site plan take over as the setbacks for that, for those projects. We also had changed, added actually access roadways and pedestrian connections. We're putting an additional requirement in. Whenever possible, pedestrian crossings should be constructed of paver blocks, stamped or colored concrete, or similar materials that clearly distinguish them from vehicular use areas. We think that this will be, worked with your staff on this to make it a much better project and a much safer project, and will also promote traffic calming. Again, we added additional requirements on pedestrian amenities. All commercial buildings shall have clearly defined, highly visible customer entryways. Those design elements and variations should give protection from sun, so we have covered areas at the entryways. And we also have outdoor seating areas that you saw in the plan, that you have in your plans, that are also there, as well as benches, and meeting all your requirements for bike racks and other amenities, which is right here. We have the, we've added this to the design guidelines so that it clearly states that for any of the users of it. In this one, the maximum height of 30 feet. These are the signs. Wawa's gas sign is the only one. The other two maining signs will be smaller. They'll be at 20 feet, and that's for the other two signs. This CPD was approved with three major signs because of the size of it and the location on the corner. So just to give you a flavor of the architectural, this is the Chick-fil-A that will be built. This is looking towards the southeast, outdoor dining area and the parking area, and the pedestrian walkways that go to it. This is a shot also to the southwest, and you can see the covered pickup window area. They also have an intermittent area that's on the other side where they take the orders by personnel that are out there so that it's done efficiently and quickly. This is the Chick-fil-A sign that will be going in. The lettering style, of course. This is the Chipotle, much smaller building, and you have these sign guidelines and other elements that they're putting on the site in your package. The project, as you state, you see in your staff report, meets all the comprehensive plan requirements, all the development regulations. We comply with everything, and we would certainly ask for your support, and we'd be glad to answer any questions. And I do have other consultants with me here tonight as well, so.
Any questions of the applicant? Let me start on this end. Any questions? Any questions on this side of the applicant? If not, thank you so much.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, public. Louis Decentini, Senior Planner for the Record, Planning and Zoning Division. The applicant did an adequate presentation, so therefore, I'm going to slide through my presentations also. So this is for the Prime Corner CPD amendment tonight. Just for the record, that the applicant received the traffic concurs approval from Palm Beach County in August 19, 2020, and is valid until December 31, 2025. Signs have been posted on the property, as well as mailers sent to the property owners within 500 feet of the property, including newspaper ad. Staff recommends the approval subject to conditions. Staff believes that the application complies with the following. There's only land development regulation, Section 9432 of the amendment standards, as well as Section 9535C, site design qualitative development standards. Is there any questions for staff?
Any questions for staff? That was fast. That was. That was efficient. Efficient was the word he was looking for. Any questions of staff? So, so is it fair to say, I mean, it sounds like there's a lot of additional improvements in this as far as like pedestrian amenities, things like that?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Nope.
No, thank you so much. Would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this application? And if not, we'll bring it back to the board. Does anyone have any concerns or questions? And if not, look for a motion for approval.
I move that the, excuse me. The Planning Board recommend to the City Commission approval with conditions of a request by Patricia Lantini and Mr. Troy Holloway and Ben Dolan of Two GHO on behalf of Prime Development LLC for a major plan development amendment to allow the following improvements. Modifications to the existing site plan to accommodate the changes needed for the construction of a 2,415 square foot Chipotle restaurant, for a construction of a 5,399 square foot Chick-fil restaurant in a drive-through and surface parking areas. Modifications to the existing site plan to accommodate changes on the existing interior roadways, spine roads located on the site. Modifications to the existing site plan to accommodate changes on the proposed western driveway. And amendments to the approved design guidelines for Prime Corner CPD. Excuse me. The motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing along with the application submitted and the staff report, which constitutes competent substantial evidence. The Planning Board hereby makes findings of fact that the application complies with the required standards of section 94-32A and sections 94-35C of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations. In addition, this recommendation is made subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report dated November 13, 2024. So I move that these conditions are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations and consistent with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach.
We have a motion. Have we a second? Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass this unanimously. Thank you. All right, then that brings us to Planning Board Case Number 1799D. May we hear from the applicant?
Good evening. My name is Joe Verdone. I'm with the law firm at Carlton Fields. I'm a certified planner, and I'm here representing Flagler Residential LLC. We have six amendments to this RPD, which was approved back in 2019, and is well under construction and is actually topped out very close to completion. The first of our amendments revolves around trying to hide a column. We had five columns along the front of the property. Through the design, that column got heavier and heavier through the process, and we decided through the, through our architects that it would be best to conceal that column behind the curtain wall. So we're asking to reduce an interior setback on the second and third level to move the curtain wall forward five feet so it encapsulates 25 square feet to enclose the, the column in this location. This requires a change to the setback table, which will change it from the 72-foot internal setback to 67 feet. It's important to note that this floor plate has not changed in size or in, in area. It's just moving the curtain wall that's internal to the building forward five feet to cover up this column. That's the only change that's required there. The second change is to allow safety railings. The project has mixed grades to its, to its neighbor to the north and to the east, which is Dr. Nasser. The difference in that grade differential is over 14 feet in places. We missed this at the beginning. We were, when we originally did our variances, we did not contemplate safety railing, a 42-inch railing. We have worked out, out with staff, to have a decorative picket fence within the landscaping to help people from falling on, from that fall hazard. And that will be concealed within landscaping, and it has been kept to the minimum necessary. I believe that Mr. Snyder has allowed us another 24 inches from the prior waiver to make this all happen. And we have plans to make that work, so we're okay with that. The third amendment is for a height exception to the overall exempt machine room or mechanical area of the building. We need additional six inches to make the elevator function properly. This is a result of some changes that occurred in the building when we combined the two penthouse units to a single penthouse unit and put a rooftop pool that required a second landing. So the six inches is necessary to make the entire system work. It accounts for a .167 inch percent of increase in the allowed exempt area. And I understand that this is actually being fixed in the code, but it hasn't actually been approved yet. The following amendments are a reference to basically the, the ownership of the Acacia right of way. Originally, it was contemplated that that was owned by the city. Through extensive title research, it turned out that it was owned by the Curry family. Flagler Residential has gone out and purchased that to fulfill the requirements of delivering the art walk on the Acacia right, right of way. At their expense, they purchased it, but we were changing the conditions just to reflect that they will own it and they will be granting easements to the city versus the other way around. That basically concludes the six, six changes that we're requesting. I have, this basically is a rendering of the revised building where you can see only the three columns and the, the curtain wall moved forward. This is our pocket park. This is our, the pocket park looking downwards towards Lake Worth. This is the entrance into the art walk. And this is a 15-foot wide alley that is being re-landscaped and repurposed to provide art in public places and a pedestrian will pass through through this block. We meet all, all the same design innovations that were part of the original approval have all been maintained as part of these changes. We maintain all the enhancements to the public realm. And the innovative design still promotes an increased open space along Flagler, public access, pedestrian crossings, pedestrian connectivity. One of the changes that staff had asked us to do was take on the obligation to build the rapid, the flashy, rapid flashing crosswalk. So we'll be installing that prior to CO. It also has been changed to a decorative crosswalk, and we're happy to do that. We meet all the standards of the code for 94207 for the variance, based on the innovative designs that we've already talked about. And we've also meet the rezoning standards of 9432A, which has been discussed extensively within the backup documents and justification. I'm here to answer any of your questions that you may have.
All right. Any questions of the applicant? Let me start on this end. Gene, Pat? Have a user? Any questions? Just one question. The move to cover those two columns, is that purely aesthetic? Purely aesthetic? Okay. All right. If there are no other questions, thank you so much. Let's hear from staff.
Just one other thing. We do agree with the conditions of approval as recommended.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Eric Schneider, Principal Planner. I'm not going to go back through the items that Mr. Verdone discussed. I will leave it on this screen because it's the same standards that you'll see in your backup report, that staff found that the amendment requests comply with the section 9432A requirements. We worked with, as Joe said, on the, some of the stuff, the language is specifically crafted based on what they wanted to do and, and make sure that it, it worked with what staff could support. So are there any questions of staff at this time?
I assume this was not a difficult one for staff? Six inches?
The six inches one was, was a surprise, I will say.
That slid pretty easy.
Yeah. I will say that one of the things on the front, and you'd asked about the, the architectural, because of the notch of the Dr. Nasser property, and it's like kind of else, it's not a rectangle, that's why only one portion of what you saw was where the setback is. The actual, the south portion of the building where it does the same thing meets code because it actually goes all the way out to Flagler, and it's a front setback and outside. So if you were wondering why, there was only that one little picture in my report as well. So because of the unique situation of the site, it's a crazy way we had to write those waivers from the start and continue them through.
Okay. Any questions of staff? And if not, we thank you. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on this application? And if not, I bring it back to the board. Does anyone have any questions, concerns? And if not, we look for a motion for approval.
Six inches enough, or do you want seven?
Yeah.
We had to look at it. They had to provide.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
I move that the Planning Board recommend to the City Commission approval of Planning Board Case Number 1799D, a request by Joe Verdone of Carlton Fields on behalf of Flagler Residential LLC for the approval of a major plan development amendment to the 1309 South Flagler Drive residential planned development. RPD to modify waivers, development regulations, and to update various plan sheets based on the build-out of the site. The motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing, along with the application submitted and the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The Board hereby makes finding of fact that each of the applicable criteria in section 94-32 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met. In addition, this recommendation is subject, this recommendation is made subject to the condition of approval contained in the staff report dated November 19, 2024. I move that this condition is necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations and consistency with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach.
All right, we have a motion. Have we a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass this unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to our last case, Planning Board Case Number 1998. May we hear from the applicant? This is going pretty slow.
Yeah.
We have a difficult board. Everyone's fighting everything. You're doing that six inches. When I saw that, when they said six, it's, it's like two miles high. They want six inches. We're like, whoa. Because it's the average in the building. So all you do is raise one side, landscaping, and there's your six inches.
Hi, good evening, Chair, Vice Chair and Board Members. Matthew Barnes, Senior Planner, or Senior, sorry, Senior Project Manager at WGI, here on behalf of Divine Savior Ministries, which is the contract purchaser of the property at hand tonight. I'd just say Divine Savior Ministries operates three campuses in South Florida. One here in Palm Beach County on Southern Boulevard near Pike Road, one in Western Delray Beach, and one in Doral, Florida. We're here tonight, this, again, I said they're a contract purchaser of this property. Their, their campus on Southern Boulevard at Pike Road, they've outgrown their needs there. It's an older building, and their, the demographic shift of their congregation is such that their congregation mostly lives more in this area. This is a, a property that was on the market, so they are seeking a change to the allowed uses in this, in this planned industrial district. This property is at 5133 Tyler Lakes Boulevard. It's the southwest corner of Tyler Lakes Boulevard and Haverhill at the entrance to the West Palm Commerce Park. The West Palm Commerce Park is not a, not a huge commerce park. It's only a handful of parcels. This is, I think, the smallest one in there. It's definitely the smallest building in there. It's a 14,000 square foot office building that's currently, has been used as a progressive office, progressive auto insurance office. Again, it's on the market. Our Divine Savior is a contract purchaser. The entire IPUD is about 400,000 square feet of office and industrial uses. The amendment is simple. We're just seeking to add to the list of permitted uses. Right now, the, the list of permitted uses in the IPD does not include churches and daycares, so we're simply seeking to add those two uses into the list of permitted uses. It would only be applicable to this one particular lot, which is lot number six of the, of the plat. So therefore, it would not be applicable to all other properties. So you, you're not opening the door to other properties in this commerce park to be, also be used as churches or daycares, just this one. So this is the current list of permitted uses, you know, and this, all, again, all we're doing is seeking is to add those lists of permitted uses. The, the site plan that we're processing will be a minor site plan that will process, we are processing it concurrently with staff. Just so you know that there aren't any major changes to the site at all. They're not proposing to demolish or add to the building, just seeking to renovate it and use it as it is, and minor changes to the parking lot. These are two conditions of approval that are in the staff report, both of which we are fine with. We have no objection to these conditions. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Thank you so much. May we hear from staff?
All right. Good day, everyone. Jermaine Swaby, Planning and Zoning Senior Planner for the Record. And the applicant has presented much of the details, so I'll be moving forward to the latter part of the presentation. All right, staff finds that the request complies with the amendment standards found in section 94-32. And staff is therefore recommending approval with the condition that, one, the approval, the approved uses shall be limited to the subject property at 5133 Tyler Lakes Boulevard. Also, for the proposed, proposed uses, the applicant is requesting church use with 400 seats and accessory daycare with 150 children. Therefore, the second condition made was that prior to City Commission, the meeting for the major amendment application, the applicant shall demonstrate that the overall plan development is not expected to exceed the 2,649 daily trip threshold set forth in Resolution Number 130-11. And the applicant shall contact the city traffic engineer to develop the analysis methodology. If the 2,649 daily trip threshold is exceeded, additional traffic analysis will be required to determine the increase in traffic warrants, if it warrants any off-site transportation improvements. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any questions of the, of the staff? Were you, you're pointing to something?
I have one question. So is the special use being granted specifically for this owner? Or is it, will it be granted in perpetuity to this specific parcel?
It's for the parcel itself.
Okay. May I ask, what would be the policy reasons why we would ever deny this kind of request? Is there a reason that, that?
Uh, no.
Concerns about this type of use?
There's no concern that staff finds, as it's only limited to the uses and, which is, which is.
I just make sure I'm not missing something. All right. Any other questions of staff? Would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this application? If not, we're bringing it back to the board. Does anyone have any objections or concerns for the application? I don't remember a time where all four just sailed through, so I'm happy. All right, looking for a motion for approval.
There's a motion at our station. Is that the one, Jermaine, you were requesting? There's a, there was a printed motion at the.
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm so sorry. What's your recommendation, Mr. Thomas? That we do it in writing and not have to do it orally? Do you want it read? Or what's your pleasure?
There was a printed motion at our stations that we should use as opposed to the one attached to the backup.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. So, all right, who wishes to make the motion?
I'll make a motion.
As, as the chair, I'm not allowed to, so I need one of you.
I move that the Planning Board grant PB Case Number 1998, a request by Raquel Samaru of WGI on behalf of Divine Savior Ministries for a major plan development amendment to the West Palm Beach Commerce Park Industrial Plan Development IPD to include churches and accessory daycare facilities as permitted uses. The motion is based upon the testimony presented along with the application submitted and staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The Board hereby makes findings of fact that each of the criteria in section 94-32 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met. In addition, this recommendation is made subject to the condition of approval contained in the staff report dated November 19, 2024. I move that this condition is necessary.
I move that this condition is necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations and consistency with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach.
Second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Well, that then brings us to co-revision cases, of which there are none. Then we go to other business, unfinished business, new business. Anything else, Ms. Van? If not, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.